This regularly scheduled planning commission meeting. Mr. Diaz, would you please perform a roll call?
Commissioner Campbell?
Here.
Commissioner Nebelen?
Here.
Chair Brown?
Here.
Commissioner Cooper?
Present.
Commissioner Vedalas?
Here.
Commissioner Evans?
Present.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Gordon, would you lead us in a salute to the flag, please? I called the one commissioner who's not here. How awesome is that? Commissioner Campbell, will you fill in?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's a good way to start.
Great, on to administrative business. I have in front of me the minutes from the October 20th presentation. All here were present. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? Or, excuse me, I'm sorry, gosh, start over. I'd like to approve the order of the agenda for tonight. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Great, Commissioner Vedalas, I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Great, thank you. All in favor, thank you. Is there a motion for the approval of minutes from October 20th, 2014? Commissioner Cooper?
I'll make a motion to approve the last week's minutes, our last month's minutes.
Commissioner Evans?
I'll second that.
Thank you, all vote? The minutes from October 20th are approved. Is there a designation of liaison to the city council meeting?
No, there's no need for a designation. A liaison.
Great, thank you. As we have no consent items, we'll move to the one public hearing item, which is an amendment to the use permit, UP-978-07, and site development permit, PSD-763-07, filed by the applicant's owners, William Hussin and Carrie Dunston, to amend permits that were previously approved by the planning commission to construct a single-family residence on a vacant lot, APN-022-150-030, located south of Fassler Avenue, east of Roberts Road, in the East Rockaway Beach neighborhood. Approval and amendment to the original approved permits is necessary because the previously approved single-family residence has been redesigned. The proposed newly redesigned residence will total approximately 2,745 square feet of living area, exclusive of a 728-square-foot two-car garage. The single-story residence will feature four bedrooms and four bathrooms. Recommended sequo status, EIR, previously approved. Proposed action, approved as condition. Is there a staff report?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. Back in October 15th of 2007, the planning commission conditionally approved a use permit and a site development permit for one single-family home with a second residential unit on vacant two-acre site located south of Fassler Avenue, east of Roberts Road, on the northeastern end of what is now the Harmony at One subdivision. The project was approved in conjunction with the Harmony at One 14-lot subdivision that was also approved by the planning commission and subsequently by the city council. However, the subject residence was not included in the planned development and is not part of the CCNRs. Additionally, the planning commission over the years has approved several extensions to the subject, you know, the single-family home that was approved on the subject site because the access road to the site had not been built and the road is currently under construction now. The property owners are requesting an amendment to the use permit and site development permit to construct the single-family residence. Approval of an amendment is necessary because the home is being redesigned, so it's changed of what it's been approved before, and staff has included the previously approved plans in your packet. The previously approved home was designed as a sunset breeze house. The house consisted of two stories, 3,721 square feet, which featured five bedrooms, four bathrooms, three-car garage, and 822-square-foot second residential unit in the basement area. The maximum height of that house was about 26 feet 2 inches. The newly proposed redesigned home, in contrast, will total approximately 2,745 square feet of living space exclusive of a 728-square-foot garage. The home will be single-story, will feature four bedrooms, four baths, and a long area, and the house will be just a tad higher than 15 feet. The home mainly, it features a flat roof and mainly the exterior is, materials is stucco and large windows give it some visual interest. And as the public, the project access and utilities would be extended from the Harmony at One project. As I mentioned earlier, the roadway is currently under construction. I also want to mention that staff hasn't put in a condition of approval to maintain the redesigned home within the same area as the previously approved home. The applicants had proposed to set it back further than the original approval, so staff has a condition of approval that the house, the new house, be built within the same footprint as the previously approved home. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the commissioners at this point? Commissioner Cooper?
I have a couple of questions for you. In the previous approval, how did the utilities get to the house and how did the access get to the house? Was, I mean, they approved some sort of plan, so how did that go about?
Well, the access would be part of the Harmony at One is going to access this property. So that was, when it was approved in conjunction with the Harmony at One, it was supposedly that the road that now is being, you know, constructed to access the Harmony at One and the utilities would be installed for this property as well.
So how does this property get excluded from the CCNRs of the major development?
It was approved in conjunction, but it's not, it wasn't included as part of it because it's a totally separate lot, where the Harmony at One was a 14-lot subdivision planned development and this one's totally a separate lot.
How close is the nearest planned house from this particular property?
I believe it's Lot 11, which is probably, I would say, approximately 100, 150 feet.
Has any study been done on the current CCNRs and how this would comply with the current CCNRs that are with the adjacent property to see how it looks in conjunction with that?
Well, the only thing, you know, the CCNRs have specific guidelines for the planned development, but not for this one. However, the applicants chose to incorporate some of the design features. For example, the Harmony at Ones, they're limited to a square footage, I believe it's 4,300 square feet. And the applicants chose to build under that square footage, and also they're limited to 29 feet in height, and so the applicants chose to observe, you know, build below that height.
And is the Harmony at One development, refresh my memory, is that being maintained by the city or is that being maintained by the homeowners in that area?
Homeowners' association would maintain that.
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Evans?
Thank you, Chair. Just a couple of questions. How does the change from the two houses affect the EIR? Does it affect it at all or?
Steph doesn't believe it affects it because the, when it was analyzed as part of the project, you know, as you could see, the house that was approved by the planning commission is much larger and it was found that the visual impacts were very insignificant. In contrast, this house is much smaller than the previously approved. It's a one-story, it's a single-story, where the other one was a two-story and much, you know, and much bigger.
Thank you. The other question was, the footprint for the fire department requirement of 150 feet maximum, is that still in effect with the new placement of the, recommended placement of the house?
I believe so. The project was routed to the fire department for compliance and they had no issues with that.
Because I noticed on the old plan, it just barely fit at that 150-foot mark, so I was wondering if, with their want to move it further out even, if it was going to go past that mark or not?
It did not. It was, as I mentioned, it was routed to the police, to the fire department to ensure compliance with the fire requirements and admit the requirements.
What kind of compliance do they need for the driveway slash parking area for permeable surface?
There's the, well, the, it's, as the property has a B-lot size overlay and a B-sized overlay usually are greater setbacks for greater, larger lots, and the impervious, they also regulate impervious surface and it's regulated to only 30%. And the impervious surface that they're proposing is much less than that.
Right.
Thank you.
Commissioner Vedalas?
My question was also about the setback. Looking on the maps, it looks like this property is all by itself and can't be seen from any location, so I am asking why you think that the 69 feet is not good and you'd rather have 25?
Well, it, the house mainly won't be, you're correct, it's not going to be seen from anywhere. However, I think if any, if anywhere you might be able to get a glimpse of it is from Lindemar. And so in keeping with the, when the house was, Steph, the reason for the condition of approval, it's sort of consistency with what was approved before. And when it was, the EIR reviewed it, of course, in that site, it found that there would be, you know, that there's no impact. Thank you.
Claire, I just want to piggyback on that question. How much are you proposing that the house be moved and in exactly what direction?
The house, as, I don't know if you could see, the original approval was about, the front yard setback required is 25 feet, and it was right at the 25-foot setback. And so Steph, I mean, is aware that it's a smaller house, you know, being closer to that 25-foot setback.
So this is setback 69 feet in addition to 25?
Well, 69 setback from the front property boundaries. The newly proposed one.
Okay. Well, I see something here that says 69 feet and it's anchored on the setback line, which is 25 feet from the property line on site plan C1.
So it's much further back right than the original.
So again, my question, how much and in what direction are you proposing that the house be moved to clear this, this condition?
It would be moved closer to where the, you know, where the driveway, where the access road, closer towards that area. Well, probably the original, let me grab my plans really quickly here. So as you could see, the original approval, as you could see, the 20, here's the 25-foot front yard setback and it was really, it was basically at the 25-foot setback, whereas the newer one is being pushed back 69 feet.
In addition to the 25?
Yes. Let me take a look.
Okay, I'm just seeking clarity on how this condition would be cleared and how much you're anticipating moving it. And then if part of the justification is in order to minimize grading and impervious surface, is there supporting analysis for that?
Well, the, as you're moving it further back, you know, you're increasing the, you're increasing the use of impervious surface and of course, you know, the necessity of grading more, whereas if you're bringing it further to the front, you know, you're minimizing grading and impervious surface.
Okay.
Because, you know, part of it, you're moving and so part, the driveway to access, of course, the driveway is going to be longer and it's so, and it's more impervious surface on the site. So if you bring it closer to the front property, to the required 25-foot setback, you're minimizing the impervious surface.
Minimizing the driveway.
Right, yeah, sure. You don't have that much longer driveway or more impervious surface.
Okay. It just seems like this is somewhat of a vague condition.
Well, and part of it, I mean, Steph didn't really want to say, well, it has to be 25 feet. I think it was more to give some latitude to the applicant and move it, you know, probably not exactly at the 25-foot setback, but, I mean, a little closer than, than, you know, right now they're proposing 69 feet further back from the 25-foot setback.
Right, but that's just to the beginning of the property. I mean, the house pretty much ends in the same spot, but that's okay. I think I understand that. Commissioner Nebelen?
Thank you. This may be just more of the same. I was just looking specifically at condition number two, and I guess this is the one you were talking about, and the reason it's drafted this way is because you want to create some latitude for the planning department with respect to where exactly you want to put it. My understanding that was, your overall intent was that you wanted the, you wanted the residents to be more or less within the footprint of the originally approved residents.
That is correct.
Is that generally speaking what we're talking about?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
And the reason for that was for visual impacts from Lindemar, is that correct? If we bring it back, it's coming off the ridge a little bit more?
That's correct. It's coming off the ridge and so, I mean, I doubt there'd be any significant visual impacts because of the house has been substantially reduced in size, but nonetheless, keeping it within the same general area, you know, there definitely wouldn't be any.
Right.
Thank you.
Thanks. Great. Commissioner Evans, you look like you're ready to roll.
Oh, no, no, not even close.
Okay. Well, then, I'd like to ask the applicant to come up and speak regarding this use permit and site development permit?
Yeah, it does make sense. Good evening, folks.
Hi.
How are you going?
Good.
Thank you all for coming here tonight. Thank you for Lee, for your support in this, your guidance, I should say, because you've spent a lot of time working on this, working on these conditions. It's been a long seven years, seems like, for me personally. My wife and I now have two kids, we had none before. I think I'm a little thicker and a little thinner in spots than I was then, too. But that aside, we're happy to be here. We're really looking forward to moving forward with a greenhouse on the site. We had to make some changes, as you've seen in the, in the house designs. Our original builder, Michelle Kaufman Designs, is no longer making homes, and so we sought out a new green design that would be thematically consistent with the developments going on adjacent to our property, the Harmony at One development. And just as some of you kind of asked there, just to let you know, this is a private property. We're not part of Harmony at One. We've gone through the alignment process simply for, as you indicated, the road and utility access. That's where that's coming from. So we went through this design process, came up with a smaller house, as you heard from Lee, as he described, shorter, smaller than before, and we located the property in a location that we thought, we felt was balanced for the property. That's why it's where it is. That being said, we're very happy to work with Lee and get that driveway distance shorter, get it closer to the, to the road up there. Some of these conditions on here are new than the previous approval. I met with Lee and gone over many of them, and we're actually fine. All of these are reasonable up through the language that's in 1920, 21. We've gone forward and established green standards that are now different than before. I should say, we've established them. There are green standards now. There wasn't before. When all of this community and us went through this process before, we were trying to identify green standards at that time. Those standards now exist within the state of California, and you see in the documentation there for the Title 24, Part 11, and CalGreen, we've gone through that certification process. So our goal is to build a greenhouse. We think we're doing a good job of that. Being said, we're fine with these additional conditions of approval that Lee has assigned here. And we've got a couple exceptions. They really have to do with language around conflicts potentially between, one between the LEED item on item 19, which is not necessarily exactly the same as what would be for the CalGreen. So we just wanted to change that language from LEED certification to LEED standards and recommend that we use a language as reasonable extent as possible as opposed to maximum extent. And that's just to give us all some flexibility while we go through identifying all these alignments between the LEED side and the, and the CalGreen side. So that was, that language of reasonable extent is feasible, we wanted to apply to items 20 and 21, which lists a lot of green suggestions.
And that's really all we have for you guys tonight. I could speak to some of the housing questions if you wanted to, either Cooper, Evans, from the history, but I think Lee answered them very, very well.
Yeah, no problem.
Why don't we open up for questions from commissioners? I think, is that you, Commissioner Campbell?
It is. I don't know why it's not coming up very well, but I'll take it. I think I'm the last commissioner standing who actually approved your project back in 2007, and I do recall that you were making big strides towards a green home and, and I do remember the diligent efforts you're making at the Sun, at the Sunset Home attempt, and I understand that developer is out, that builder is out of business.
Right.
Anyway, I commend you for persevering through this. I do recall during that time when we approved the project that site lines, especially from Lindemar Beach, was just the big thing, and, you know, we had, this place was full, standing room only on that issue. How do you feel about the sightlines with the setbacks that you're proposing as opposed to the setbacks that originally were approved?
Sure, thanks for that question. That was one of the things that we heard, obviously, during that process, was concerns about sightlines, visibility, and so even when we went through that first house design, we were very sensitive to that, took pictures, presented photographs of how most of the house would basically not be seen from almost anywhere down, down in the Lindemar area. And in accordance with that, we feel that by making the house smaller and relocating, in fact, it's in an even better location to reduce sightlines and visibilities from the Lindemar area than we had previously. That was really, our goal was to minimize that community impact in any way we could.
Is there any visual at all that was redone on that as far as like the sightlines go from Lindemar, or do you have anything like that?
Oh, in terms of like photographs and things?
Yeah, yeah, not this time around?
I don't have them with me, but I just know that because we've made the house shorter and smaller, it's got to be better than it was before.
Right. The setbacks don't bring it up, up on the ridge more, though?
No, actually, well, when we've walked on the property by its current location, we've actually moved it farther from the front ridge towards Lindemar, more towards the center. If you made an X in the property, we've moved it more towards the center and actually around closer to where the road is coming in from Harmony at One. So we feel that we've relocated it that way. And that being said, we're still fine to shrink the driveway and move it, move the house closer to where the turnabout will be for Harmony at One, and that's an easy thing to do to reduce permeable surface. So yes, we're, we're very confident and happy with this location in terms of the sightlines. It's, in respect to that, we believe it's an improvement over the, over the previous house.
Okay. And then, yeah, and I think the sightlines, at least if I remember correctly, and it's been a while, that seemed to be the paramount issue.
Yeah.
The LEED certification provision, I know that was a pretty, a pretty big one, too, and I guess my only concern is if we do, if we were to change some of the provisions here, I'm wondering about the echo effect it'll have on the other, the rest of the Harmony at One as a precedent.
So good question. I would suggest that we're actually not part of Harmony at One. Their CCNRs and their requirements are theirs.
Yeah, I remember, I remember that.
Right, right? Remember that tough line that we kind of had to draw up there? So for us, the challenge came from when we were trying to design the greenhouse, how do we, what do we design it for? And originally, LEED's in 2007 was the leading certifier of what green was, and this community with us came up with a whole list of items that you see here of what green could mean. Since that time, the city has participated in a green study, the state of California took this on, and all of these community voices came through to create what is now the CalGreen standards or the Title 24, Part 11, which does a lot of the things that, and even more in some cases, things that we hadn't thought of. And so that's the current standard that we have in the state of California, and that's what we shot for. So we've got the, all those CalGreens, we've got that documentation there, and then, so for us, we're fine, again, try and do as much green as possible, and that's why we just wanted to change the language from the certification to just, to aspire for the LEED standards and the, as reasonable as, as practical.
Right, that's, and I remember that the green building ordinance came after the approval of this project.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Good to see you again.
Yeah.
Commissioner Cooper?
I have a question in regards to, again, this is the setback, don't want to be ad nauseam, but did you take a look at the difference in site disturbance if you were to move your house a little closer to the street versus where it is now? It seems to be pretty much centered on the, on this ridge right now. If you were to move it closer, it seems like you'd have more excavation. Have you taken a look at that?
I'm sorry, I don't understand, if we move it closer than what it is now?
Yeah, if you were to move it closer to, yeah, well, how would it impact your grading and how would it impact disturbance to the, to the property?
So, yeah, so a shorter road in general would mean that it would have to be a steeper incline, and so in that area, it's not perfectly flat, right? So if you have a longer road that we have it now set at, that's where we worked with our architect and our, our civil engineer to design the road to the proper pitch. That being said, we're happy to work with Lee and make it shorter if it's practical and move it closer.
I guess my question is, how does it affect the foundation of the house?
So that's what we'll have to have, the civil engineers go on site with the geotech people because there is requirements for a foundation there, a pure and grade foundation, and so the location, when the house is properly sited at the time, that's what we'll be working with Lee to really finalize, it's going to sit here or 10 feet this way or 20 feet that way. And certainly the foundation and the bedrock underneath will, will play into that decision.
And I guess on a scale of 1 to 10, how, how much do you like where you currently have your house situated versus if I were, we were to say, okay, you had to move it closer to the road?
It's a fairly easy thing for us to move it a bit closer to the road. I think it would be, require significant changes to move it much closer to the road.
Okay.
If that's the kind of...
Yeah, I just wanted to see how, you know, see, see how much you liked the house exactly where you have it laid out versus if we were to say, hey, you know what, we like it a little closer to the road according to the original permit.
Sure. So it's a two-acre lot, which, if you guys ever walked a two-acre lot, I'm astounded every time I walk on it, but it's basically 300 feet by 300 feet. That's a football field by a football field. So positioning the house on the lot doesn't really change much, except I have more backyard and less front yard kind of thing. So a bit of it is okay. I think a lot of it, we would probably prefer to always be farther from your neighbors. It's just a natural kind of thing, but where we're at, it's really good, and moving it a bit closer will be fine.
A question in regards to your number 19, where you wanted us to strike out the word... A question in regards to your Number 19, where you wanted us to strike out the word "certification" to "standard." Are you not able to meet the gold certification from LEED if that's in fact what we wanted?
The LEED certification process, the paper side, is a very expensive process to go through. That being said, we're fine with doing another equivalent. There's many out there. So what we were asking for was the LEED standards or equivalent to be in the language there, because we're going through the CalGreen as our certification process. Can that answer your question?
I'm not that familiar, I'm familiar with LEED, I'm familiar with the certifications versus silver, gold versus platinum, and how that goes about. And I understand there's a lot of paperwork that. I guess my concern is, is that if it's just a standard, then it doesn't really tie you into anything as far as is doing something with this property to say, hey, it is green. I mean, there's no particular teeth into it, because you haven't achieved, I mean, if it says a certification, then obviously it's a certification and that's what you'd need to do. From a standard point, it doesn't seem like there's any requirement.
There's less of a requirement, there's more flexibility. That's exactly correct. That's what we're asking for, because we are complying with the California green standards, right? That's what the law asks us to do. And so there's the possibility of conflict there between what LEED wants and what CalGreen wants, right? And so what we're trying to do is abide by the law for what green is. And we will push as hard as we can to get as many additional green things in there as we can.
Is the Harmony at One a LEED or a...
I'm sorry, I don't know. You'd have to check with the Harmony at One folks for that.
Thank you.
Sure.
Regarding the green standards, and maybe this is more of a question for staff, but are we holding this project to the, to the conditions that were met before? Or because the use permit and the site development permit are up, can we look at these conditions with a fresh set? I mean, I think the points raised about LEED certification, that's no longer the only way to go. There's a new law. So, I mean, are some of these, is there, that would imply to me that there's flexibility like the applicant is requesting.
Certainly if the commission wants to re-explore, some of these conditions were the ones that were carried over from the previous approval.
That's right.
So they're not anything new, it was just that they were, they were, when the house was first approved back in 2007, they were just carried over.
Great. Thank you. Commissioner Nivlin?
Thank you. I think this is for staff. I'd like to get a sense if I could, what's the difference in terms of sort of stringency as between CalGreen and LEED certification? And are there any conflicts in particular that you're aware of? As, you know, conflict to me means that you can't possibly comply with both as opposed to perhaps having to do some additional things beyond?
Correct. I'm not aware of any conflicts between the two of them.
Okay. And is it the case that LEED certification is more stringent than CalGreen?
It, yes. That's my understanding with LEED certification, it's much harder.
What's your perspective on the requested modifications to these conditions of approval 20, 21, that we were just, that the applicant is proposed?
Well, he's proposing, I think, instead of maximum reasonable?
Yeah, reasonable, as opposed to maximum extent feasible.
Right.
The extent reasonably feasible. What's your, what's your perspective on that?
Well, as I said, these are carried over from the last, seven years ago, they were carried over. So, I mean, you know, staff is open, you know, if they're reasonable as opposed to the maximum extent.
So that seems, that seems like something you'd be able to implement, something you'd be able to track?
Yes.
Okay.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Evans?
Well, my question, I guess, was back to staff also on that similar line was, if they were to do all this over again, would, would the city prefer LEEDs or the CalGreen?
Well, the applicant would have to, of course, you know, now that Cal, you know, when, you know, CalGreen wasn't implemented then and we had no green building, we had no green building standards then, so at the time it was, of course, of, you know, doing the LEED certification and the additional, these, I guess, Condition Number 20 and 21, those additional measures that, on top of the certification.
Right. And I guess all I'm trying to find out is the, if the LEED, if this in front of us, this LEED certification with these requirements is seven years old, I'm guessing the CalGreen is much newer with a lot more up-to-date requirements?
It certainly is, much newer, yes. But at least with these, I think with, at the time that staff was draft, that was putting these together is that, you know, some of them may overlap, but at least to ensure that, that the project was being built in a green manner.
Yeah, I understand. I'm just, I'm hesitant on requiring the applicant a significant cost if it's old business compared to newer style business. So that's my hesitation there, thus the questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Campbell?
So, a question for the applicant. It seems like the cost of the certification, the LEED certification, is an issue. And I'm aware that the, going through the actual certification process, having someone come and audit, basically, the project efforts done is an expensive process. I know that we conditioned some other LEED certified buildings, no, well, they weren't actually ultimately certified, because what we did is we requested that they design the building to LEED standards, but that they didn't have to actually get the certification. And we did that for the new Walgreens and we did that for that beautiful McDonald's in Manor. And I think the city checked up on those LEED standards to make sure that they were engineered and met. Would that be something that, that you would be amenable, amenable to? Designing to the LEED standard?
Absolutely.
But not actually getting the certification?
Correct. That's consistent with the thematics that we have had through all of these years on the project, which is to design to green standards and to aspire to include as many of those green features as we can.
And the reason I ask is, I don't know if I'm the only commissioner who's certain on that green building task force, gets voted for it now either. But the LEED, when we approved that, it was a recognition that the LEED standards were actually more stringent than the green building standard that we ultimately adopted, but that the green building standard was a good thing to do anyway. And I think it is still the case that the LEED standards today are still like the gold standard to, even though they're not as new or newly adopted. So sticking with that LEED standard, I think, would be, I think it would be consistent with the intent of the commission at the time it approved your project. And so kinda keeping that in there, making sure that we design it to LEED standard at least. And, you know, we've gotta talk about whether, you know, we can get something like that done here without you having to actually incur the cost of certification would work. But it's good to hear you're amenable to it.
Yeah, we're open to doing as much of the green design, incorporating that, working with staff to make sure that these things are in there that, it's the thematic system that we had from the beginning, which is to build a greenhouse on that two-acre property. Yeah, I was just remembering that one of the reasons it was, I think, I think 19 is added, I have to ask Lee, 19 is something that was not, was that originally on our original approval, the LEED standards?
Yes, it was. It was, that condition was for your, your house as well as the Harmony at One plan development.
So I think that was easy for us at the time, because we were dealing with a manufactured home from the Sunset Breeze House and all of those, that was part of Michelle Kaufman's design stance, it was delivering a LEED certified home, right?
Right.
Without the benefit of pre-manufactured home, those, it's a bit more challenging to do that than it was then.
Right, because you didn't need to actually get the certification, they would've just come with the home.
It was included.
I remember those Michelle Kaufman homes, yeah, it was part of it.
They're outstanding homes.
Yeah, I know, it's a shame she's out of business, but, right. So maybe we can still get the same, similar result, but without the, that cost.
Yeah, there's a large number of those green features. We've incorporated as many as we can. We want to be green, we know it's the right thing to do. It's, honestly, it's simple. It's what we want, right? So we're doing as, as much of that as we can.
Yeah, I recall that, and I recall that's why we approved your project. I mean, we've had a lot of faith in that, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Cooper?
In the levels of the LEED certification, obviously there's different levels. In the CalGreen, is there different levels of certification that they go through?
I'm sorry, I just actually can't speak to that. I don't have enough knowledge of the different levels. Do you know, Lee?
I have two.
All right, I have, just for my fellow commissioners, if I was to look at that sentence, there's a new sentence that would go something like, "The new single-family residence shall be designed and constructed to achieve LEED gold standard," to simplify the requirement.
Well, I think the way it's written right now, it doesn't literally require a gold standard. It says it would achieve LEED certification, which I guess could be at a lower standard?
No, the certification is actually a process, so it would have to meet those requirements in order to get that certification.
Okay, so then the standards, you're certified and then you're certified at a specific standard?
Yeah, the standards are the requirements in order to meet the gold certification. There are different levels. There's a silver certification, there's a gold and a platinum.
Well, I guess, because it looked to me like the gold standard was to be achieved whenever possible, whereas there's a silver certification that's, am I wrong about that?
Yeah, because it says, "constructed to attain all necessary points to achieve LEED certification."
Correct. And shall seek to obtain a gold standard whenever possible. I'm a little confused by that.
It is a confusing statement.
Yeah, if I recall, it was, they are supposed to get, the minimum LEED standard, at least. That was, that was the floor.
Well, there's a minimum, there's a minimum gold LEED standard and then there's a minimum silver LEED standard and there's a minimum platinum LEED standard.
Couldn't we accomplish the same intent by just replacing the word "certification" in Condition 19 with the word "standards"?
And maybe adding "or CalGreen standards"?
I probably wouldn't go that far, but...
So how would it read if we were...
Well, just to simplify the statements, the points becomes irrelevant. So the new single-family residence shall be designed and constructed to achieve LEED gold standards. Keep it simple. And then in 20, I would say, change the maximum to reasonable.
Why don't we ruminate on that a little bit? Thank you for speaking about your project. At this point, we've got a, I wanna open it up to the audience, several of you there. If you do wanna speak on an agenda item, please do submit one of these cards to Mr. Diaz. First up is a familiar face, Tom Clifford.
It's only got two minutes on here. Should have at least three.
We know you.
Give me a break. It's still only chiming off from two. I'm gonna run over then. One, I'm Tom Clifford. I was actually one of the commissioners when this project came through, and I do have some memory of it. I actually, if you're actually thinking of changing the standard, the condition on the standard, on the LEED standard, I would go with what Mr. Cooper was suggesting, if that's what you're going to do. I would recommend against it, because you do have the Harmony at One coming right at you and it has the same condition and they're going to be looking for the same treatment. So that said, that's, that's, this is something I hadn't expected to talk about. In terms of this project, I think it should stay on the original footprint as, as staff has recommended. I've still got two minutes. And I, I also think that the asphalt driveway should be changed instead of a permeable surface. There are several, there are several permeable surfaces rather than the impervious surface of asphalt. And in fact, in the conditions of approval for the Harmony project, it says, "All retaining wells, grading, and paving shall blend into the hillside by using natural colors textured and textured materials." So it's not intended to be a black asphalt up there anyway. Now, I know this isn't Harmony, but it's attached directly to it, so it shouldn't have asphalt attached to a roadway that's not supposed to be asphalt. It's supposed to be colored to match the hill. My second thing is I would like to see, it's like solar panels or a living roof on it. I've still got a minute. And then the, the final thing I'd like to talk about, and I was feeling a little rushed there, and that is that the condition, there's a condition in the CCNRs for the Harmony that says they won't build any second units. These people have generously taken out the second unit that they were going to build. I would like it to now be a condition that there not, in the future, be a second unit built on the property. So it would comply with, it would match everything else that's going up on that hill. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom.
Tom, I'd like to, do you have that Harmony language for the driveway?
It's not direct, it's for all of...
That's fine.
Everything. Thank you.
I'll give, I'll give it back to you.
Pick up all the letters in your last name, but I think your first name is Javier?
Good evening, commissioners. Javier Chavaria, 848 Burns Court here in Pacifica. I'm here basically to encourage you to approve the house, the modification. We totally support the design of the husband's. And I'd like to take this opportunity to give you a little bit of clarification regarding LEED and Green Point. In 2007, the green movement was new. Everybody was coming up with ideas, okay, let's do this, 'cause it's green. And there was a really big disarray of standards on how to build. LEED came up ahead, and that was the only organized group that really made sense to follow. LEED made a tremendous impact on commercial construction, but never really made a substantial impact on residential construction, mainly because of the cost. And it became mostly kind of a private business where it added $10,000 as an average to a single-family home to get the base LEED certification, led above the silver, the gold, or the platinum. State of California stepped up and green became the norm. A code was developed. Every plan that is prepared in California today says it needs to comply with the California Building Code, California Mechanical Code, California Electrical Code, California Green Code. So we can do LEED, we can do many things, but yet we have to comply with the California Building Code if we want to obtain a building permit. City of Pacifica adopted an ordinance where it says, "Green Point System." So the Green Point System establishes a minimum number of points that you have to achieve, depending on the size of the project, depending on the type of project, whether it's a remodel or whether it's a new home. On a new home, the minimum number of points is 97 points to get green certified. And then you start achieving points and you achieve different levels. You can get gold, you can get silver, and you can get platinum. If you get over 140 points on that list, then you can achieve a platinum certification under the Green Point System. By doing that, you are complying with the ordinance of the City of Pacifica, with the state of California, and you are being very green. The standards are very similar. The difference is the rating. Whereas a developer has to spend $2,000 on obtaining green rating assessment, you have no idea how much you have to spend to get LEED certification. I'm an engineer, I practiced myself this. I have submitted, actually, LEED documentations by choice of a client to the City of San Mateo. City of San Mateo says, "It's great, but we still wanna see the Green Point System, because LEED is not in compliance with our ordinance and with our code." So therefore, I commend you, I urge you to follow the green ordinances we have, to follow the law that we have, which is the California Green Code and the ordinance of the City of Pacifica. We will get, and I say "we," I mean, the husband's, will get a project that will be to the highest standards that we can expect. And green certification certainly makes sense for... that we can expect. And green certification certainly makes sense for Pacifica, makes sense for their home. Thank you.
We have another speaker, Neil Schwartz.
Neil Schwartz, I represent the developers, and I'm also the president of the current Homeowners Association for Harmony. Just to, not to correct Lee, but the house's lot is next to lot number 10, not lot number 11. And lot number 10 has a view easement that is already set up by the city to give them a view of the city. So, I just wanted to bring that up. The homeowners association has no, we're fine with everything they're doing, and we have no objections, okay?
I see no more cards, no one else to speak on this. Okay, let's bring it back to the commissioners and see if we can bring this to some form of resolution. Commissioner Evans.
Thank you, Chair. And this is a question back to the applicant, if I could, please. Do you have any problem in changing the asphalt driveway to something else, to where it connects better with the permeable paver or whatever? I understand if it's closer to the, if it's a little bit closer to the street, it'd be less driveway, but I just wanted to get your opinion on that, instead of an asphalt driveway.
Sure. So, I actually have to almost defer to staff on this, but there's rules about the composition of the hardscape. That is, we have put in a lot of permeable pavers around the house. That's where we've chosen to spend the extra money for permeable space, and we've chosen to use asphalt as the impermeable percentage of our hardscape. That's how we've balanced these things out. So, we're comfortable with the plan that we have, and anything more than that would be impactful to rebalance those two within the hardscape.
Dollar figures, yeah.
Yeah. So, there's, I mean, maybe Lee can speak to this clearer than I can, but there's a balance that you have between, of the hardscape. You don't make everything permeable by law. There's a minimum amount of permeable that you have to have.
Yeah, I'm aware you're way under in the figure for permeable impermeable surface. So, I was just wondering what your thought on that was, though. Thank you.
Commissioner Campbell.
I really respect what Mr. Chavaria was saying about the green building points, and I think he's correct in that we do need to make sure that we don't approve anything that would conflict with that ordinance or our green building, or the state building code. And I don't think that maintaining that LEED standard would do that if we're having them designed to it. And I think we should keep that for, the major reason was that if we, the green building ordinance, the state code is something that everyone has to comply with. When I remodeled my bathroom, I had to comply with it. And it's got a point system that is pretty generous. You can move the points around a lot, and it's, quite frankly, at least from my perspective, not the most, you know, onerous building code that's out there. The developments that are going up on the hill as part of this project tonight, and also the Harmony at One, were seen as, those are supposed, that was, there's a lot of trade-offs for allowing that to proceed as its plan. And it was supposed to be seen as a real special project. And I think, you know, as Mr. Chavaria said, there's a point of pride, I think, for having this project be at least designed, which I think it would be a significant concession already, as opposed to actually getting the certification, but at least designed to the LEED standard. And I do think by complying with the green building ordinance, you're actually getting a long way there already. So, and also that the main expense that we've been hearing about the LEED certification is that, is the audit. You've got to bring in an engineer, he's got to audit everything. You know, Commissioner Cooper can probably talk more about that than I can. And I don't mean to degrade that process at all, but it is an expense. And so, perhaps we could at least get it in place here, that we get it designed to the LEED standard. It certainly would allow some of the homeowners who go up there, if they want to complete the process and actually get it, you know, LEED certified, more power to them. Although, again, we're only dealing with this project. We're not dealing with Harmony at One. Anything we do here is, you know, should not, should not be seen as precedent-setting for Harmony at One. I think we need to make that clear tonight. But, I guess that's where I stand on that LEED.
Why don't, I'm just going to try to bring up the areas for discussion and see if we can go through these. And just before we get to a motion, just make sure we're ready for that. The first one is condition two, which states, "The single-family residence on the two-acre site shall be constructed closer to the minimum 25-foot front yard setback subject to the approval of the planning director," which is a consistent intent to getting back to the original footprint, and is open enough so that there's room for citing the house appropriately, et cetera. And the landlord, or the applicant, has said that, you know, a bit closer is fine. Is there, does anyone want to propose any changes or suggest any differences to condition number two? Or discuss condition number two more, or just, is it fine as is?
Well, I think I would have been a little more comfortable if there's some reference explicit. I think there's plenty on the record, probably in light of the conversations we've had. But, on the other hand, I think I would be a little more comfortable if there was an explicit reference, at least to the, sort of the guiding principle that we're trying to adhere, you know, in some, as close as reasonably possible to the original footprint.
My only concern is that, looking at the current set of where the house is, it seems to minimize the grading, and it seems to be pretty well-centered on the property. So, I don't, just to follow what the existing, our previous permit was, doesn't seem like a rational...
I'm with Commissioner Cooper on this. I mean, it's a different house, so it's going to have a different footprint. It's a smaller house. We don't have new sightlines to verify, but the argument that's made before us seems to make logical sense. The, we don't have an analysis about a reduction in grading and, you know, some of the justifications for moving it. Me personally, I would be in favor of actually striking that condition. But I just want to see, well, I just want to get us closer on the areas of discussion before someone tries to put together a motion, having had a couple motions that failed. I'd like to, I'd like to at least help everybody out. Is there more discussion to be had on, so we sort of have two different points on item number two. Is there more discussion? Commissioner Vidalas?
I would strike number two also, because where this property is sitting, this is the most level spot on this property, and it looks like it would minimize grading to have it here. So, I agree that I would like to strike number two.
Okay. All right. Do you want to try to convince us otherwise, Commissioner? Okay, great. So, the next item is condition number 19. "The new single-family residence shall be designed and constructed to attain all necessary points to achieve LEED certification and shall seek to obtain a gold standard whenever possible." So, it seems, it seems the intent of this is to hold this project to a higher standard than Cal Green would suggest. And in fact, LEED seems to be the preferred standard. And then the question really is around, can we phrase this in a way that is more around reaching the standard, but not, but coming short of requiring a certification? And are we in general agreement with that intent?
Well, this is a question for staff, actually, then, at this point. Was, does staff have anyone on board, I know we used to, that would be able to verify that this development was indeed designed to LEED standards?
We do not, but we would have to, at the applicant's expense, probably have a consultant look at it to make sure that, you know, that it's, you know, those standards are being achieved.
Okay.
It seems like as a group, we're opposed to backing off of the LEED standard and just putting LEED slant Cal Green. Is that, I'm seeing nodding heads.
Well, I don't think we need to put Cal Green in it because it's...
It's required, yeah.
It's required.
Context, okay. Great. So, the only thing that I had, Commissioner Cooper, on what you suggested, was that this allows them to achieve, this says achieve a LEED certification, doesn't say which level, and then it says, "Shall seek to obtain a gold standard whenever possible." So, it seems to give some leeway as to what LEED standard. And so, when you proposed your revision, it didn't seem to have that leeway in it. Do you want to take another crack at it?
Well, I'm comfortable with what you're recommending as far as the certification of the standard, and I understand what your, where your point is. The question here is that the, "Obtain all necessary points" is, becomes really unnecessary.
Got it.
I think that the home should be designed to the gold standard, and whether or not it's implemented, I think, is another issue. But I think that they should certainly take the time to design it to that, and then when the implementation comes along, they can, I would assume they could use their best efforts to make that design happen.
And just a question of clarification, aren't points how you would achieve a gold standard?
Yes, that's why it's redundant.
Oh, I see. I see why you're saying it's redundant. I thought you were saying it's redundant if we removed the certification part. Got it. Okay, I understand that. Are there any, is there more to discuss here? Commissioner Evans?
Thank you, Chair. I don't have a problem in changing from certification to standards. And of course, the Cal Green is required anyway, so I don't think we need to specify that. It's already...
It's a requirement.
It's a requirement, yeah. And I know this property is not connected, but with all the eyes on Harmony at One, we need to make sure that we don't, what's the right word? Yeah, that we minimize any effect on the Harmony at One with, we want to hold them to high standard. I mean, those are expensive homes that are going to be up there. And are they going to be required to have, I mean, they were advertised to have required LEED certification, correct?
That's the same condition of approval that was...
Right, right. So, I just don't want to jeopardize Harmony at One, and I'm not trying to involve you in Harmony at One, believe me. So, that's my only concern on that, is...
Right. It could be taken as a precedent.
Right. And, but hopefully, I mean, the applicant's design is much more of a standard house, much, completely downsized from what the original was, so I applaud them for that. That's my only concern, is I just didn't want to jeopardize anything on Harmony at One requirements. And, but I'm fine with the standards instead of certification.
Okay. Commissioner Nivellin.
And I definitely want to defer to, particularly my colleague who's got the experience, you know, dating back to 2007, so I'm very interested in your views generally with respect to this. But I want to make sure I understood what you were saying earlier about the need, probably to bring a consultant on in any event, to take a look at, you know, because we're talking about, I understand the difference between designer standards and certification. And are we talking about a significant cost savings, if you're going to have to go out and get a consultant anyway, to, you know, sort of verify, you know, whether or not the design is to, to a LEED standard, as opposed to what it would cost to have it certified? I just, I want a sense of...
I'm not sure how much it would cost, but, you know, definitely, somebody would be looking at it, because we don't have staff that would, can verify that, so it would be a consultant that's, that could look at the LEED standards and see if whatever they're proposing is satisfactory.
Got it. And I guess what I'm trying to get a sense of is, what's the scale of the difference? I mean, are we saving the applicant some significant amount of money by going the route we're talking about here, as opposed to just having it certified and being done with it that way?
I don't know about that. I don't know if there's a cost savings.
Are you going to be bringing in a consultant for Harmony One to review those plans when they come in?
There'll be a consultant that will review the green building elements and LEED certification.
Okay.
So, I guess, you know, with the statement that we had on here, is to achieve LEED standards and shall, shall what? Shall be designed to obtain gold standard? Or how do we want to word that?
I think, "designed to gold standard" should at least be in there, and I guess then the trick is...
So, "The new single-family residence shall be designed and constructed to achieve LEED standards and shall be designed to obtain gold standard?"
This is where my memory fails me on, this is the original, what we have here is the original language.
Correct, right.
My, if my memory serves, I think what we were trying to say is that they designed to at least the minimum LEED standard, which would be a silver, and it tried to achieve the gold standard whenever possible, and get it certified. That was seen as something that was desirable at the time. I think here, we could say that something similar as to what we have here, I think it still works. You design and construct to obtain LEED...
I would strike "attain all necessary points."
Yeah, get that out of there. And that you design, the, "designed to achieve LEED certification and shall seek to obtain a gold standard whenever possible." And then I think we have to put something in about, the city needs to verify that the design
Well, I would strike out the word "certification" and put "standards."
Right.
Yes. Yeah, I'm sorry, I would too.
Standard, and then keep the words "whenever possible" regarding which level of standard?
I would just say, "in designed to obtain gold standard." If you, if the commission feels like the "whenever possible" is a more leeway or more easy term to deal with, then...
Well, the difference between achieving silver LEED and gold LEED is not something that, I'm 100% understanding of the cost differential between the two.
Well, I think there's a self-certification and then going hiring a consultant to go do this. So, it's expensive to go have this reviewed.
Right.
I don't want to force the homeowner into incurring too much additional expense on this. But I certainly think that the requirement to achieve a LEED standard should be maintained.
Yes.
And then, I would say that they should design to a gold standard. That's what they're trying to design to. Whenever possible, I think, is just, is a really loose term, and I think it just kind of defeats the purpose of why we have this in here.
Yeah, that's true. I would agree with you.
Before we move on from that point, I'd like to see if the applicant has a response to that. Is making, achieving the gold standard...
Well, actually, it would read, "The new single-family residence shall be designed and constructed to achieve LEED standards and shall be designed to obtain a gold standard." Doesn't say you're going to achieve it, just says it'll be designed to.
Is that too significant of a burden?
I'm getting flashback to when we went through this same discussion seven years ago.
I know. I wish we weren't revisiting this. I am getting PTSD.
So, there was a whole lot of discussion around LEED certification at the time, because we did not have a standard anywhere, right? So, we, a lot of those standards are already in the Cal Green, right? There are additional things that can be done to achieve LEED silver and LEED gold. I don't have the experience to point to the specific difference between what Cal Green and LEED silver is versus LEED gold. And my understanding is that LEED gold is a significant jump up. So, that's why we had the "whenever..."
gold is a significant jump up. So that's why we had the whenever possible in there. That was to enable us to pick and choose what would be gold with a guarantee that we would design to the LEED standards for the silver, that we would have that. We feel that the, that the process of developing green standards in the state of California with Cal Green has met the original intent of LEED certification, which was the silver standard, and that's what we've designed to in with the house. And in terms of the language, we'd like to say achieve LEED standards and shall seek to obtain a gold standard whenever possible. We're just looking to change from certification to standards with the, with the establishment of the California Green Standards Title 24, Part 11. That's, that was the balancing act that we thought of when we came up with this proposal for item 19.
Thank you. Okay. So-
We're simply suggesting change certification to standards in that sentence.
That's right, that's right. Okay, so we still have some disagreement on, on the words whenever possible.
Well, I think it's a little bit, this whenever possible is a little redundant in light of the fact that shall seek to obtain, that's not especially tight language anyway.
Shall seek to provides enough room-
I think that already has some wiggle built into it.
Very well.
Yeah.
Okay.
I would agree.
Next. Thank you. And then conditions 20, and, why don't we take them one at a time? Replacing the word maximum, so prior to occupancy, the applicant shall incorporate to the maximum extent feasible, as determined by the planning director, the green building elements, including but not limited to the following three and a half pages. And change that word maximum to reasonable. Is there any?
A reasonable.
Good point. The maximum to a reasonable.
I think if we're going to say to the extent feasible, you don't really need, if you're going to strike maximum, you don't really need reasonable. I mean, to the extent feasible, I think, kind of implies a reasonable.
Very good. Even easier. Just strike the word maximum and replace that with, the applicant shall incorporate to the extent feasible.
Yep.
We don't want to put commercially feasible?
No, it's not.
Okay. And then the same point with condition 21, striking the word maximum. This is related to, well, basically, I'm not sure why this is separate from condition 20. So are there any, are there any objections to striking the word maximum in condition 21 as well?
Can I make a suggestion? As opposed to feasible, can we, can we say practicable? Just because that, that kind of a term of art in the-
That's kind of where I was going.
Because it's a term of art that implies cost, logistics, and feasibility, just in the green building context, and it would be something that you could reference to later.
So-
Sounds good.
In both conditions, 20 and 21, strike maximum and replace feasible with practicable.
Yes.
Commissioner Evans?
Thank you, Chair. My only question was to staff. With these changes, do you, does staff have any problems or issues?
No, staff doesn't have any issues.
It would be sufficient for you guys then.
It would be, because that way, it would allow staff to work with the, with the applicant in implementing some of these conditions.
I mean, the bottom line, you still have control over the, over the project anyway.
Exactly.
Yeah, thank you.
So not to, not to beat a dead horse, but just so I can get red back, condition 19 again, as to, if someone wrote that down, because I did not write it down, that's how it exactly, it reads.
Cooper's the keeper of the state of the art there.
So, number 19 would read, "The new single-family residence shall be designed and constructed to achieve LEED standards and shall seek to obtain a gold standard."
Thank you.
Great.
Just did not want to do a disservice to the five-hour meetings we had on this.
Is there, is there any, anything else, or are we ready for a-
I would like to add, I think that the driveway is one of the critical elements for this project, since it's being surrounded by the Harmony. I think they should be able to meet the same standards as the Harmony on the driveway issue.
What is that standard?
Well, regardless of if it's paving or not, I think that it needs to have the same similar type of entrances the rest of the Harmony projects out there. You know, I'd asked you about the impermeable surfaces, and the original impermeable surface amount was 4.6%, and your proposed new plan is 7.4%. So I'm not quite taking the idea that a permeable driveway would not be conducive to this property. It seems like it, it might be a feasible element.
I'd be in agreement with that. I think the visual aspect of, again, this project, the visual aspects were just so in the forefront of everyone's minds when they approved this project, that I think that's, that would be something that would be important.
Right. I mean, I don't know what the particular standard is right now, because I don't have it in front of me. Is that something the applicant would be willing to do?
So, thank you guys for looking at this. Again, so, and realize that we're looking at the driveway as like this thing, but you have to look at the whole site. And so there's requirements from, from the planning, the planning department on, out of the amount of hardscape that we're changing and we're putting in place, what percentage is permeable and what percentage is impermeable. And we're, I think we're well below the minimum for this. So I would request that, since we're meeting the requirements, and in fact, we're well below the requirements, that the amount of asphalt we're putting in for a project of this size is actually very small.
I'm more, I'm more concerned about the look of the driveway as well as the permeability. I know you've incorporated it in the rest of the landscaping, but if there is a provision in the, in the Harmony, and I'm just going to read this, "All retaining walls, grading, and paving shall be blended into the hillside by using natural colors, textures, and materials." If that is in fact in the Harmony CCNRs, I think that your driveway would look quite odd out of the entire development. So what I'm asking is that you follow the same requirement that the Harmony would have for those driveways, just so there's a uniform effect. If that includes permeability, then so be it. But if it does not, then I would, I would agree with you that, hey, you know what, you don't have that requirement.
So this is a, an aesthetic more than a-
I think we all, I think we all would like it permeable. I understand where you're, where you're coming from, though, and you are well under the minimum, the maximum requirement for permeability. I would certainly like to see it permeable, but then and again, if the Harmony driveways are not permeable, then I'd hate for you to have the only permeable driveway that's out there.
We're fine to work with staff on that and try and come up with a good solution there. I don't have one right at, right at the tip of my tongue right now, but yeah, we're fine to work with staff and come up with a-
Does the gentleman that was in charge of the homeowners, do you know what those driveways are going to be like?
The driveways are going to be pavers, but their property is at the very, very end of this development and really will have no effect. I mean, you won't even be able to see their property from anywhere in Pacifica. It's that far back on, on the land. You have to really be up on the property to notice that.
Right. I still see, you know, I still, if I was to drive up there, I would like to see a uniform type.
I mean, what you have, you're going to have a big cul-de-sac right in front of their property. That's all going to be asphalt anyway.
Right.
So.
It does slope down away from the cul-de-sac.
I would still like to see pavers if that's what's being required, but I'll leave it up to my fellow commissioners.
You know, on, on one hand, it would be nice for it to be uniform. On the other hand, as, as the synapses start to fire on where this project is, and I did tour that site, it is tucked away. And as a final point, it does go towards showing that this project is unique on its own, different than the rest of Harmony at One. And it goes to show that nothing tonight here is precedent-setting for Harmony at One, because this is case in, case in point, that this is, this shows how unique a little parcel this is as opposed to the rest of Harmony at One.
Yeah, that's why I would be hesitant to add any of the conditions that pertain to the CCNRs in Harmony at One to this project, for that very reason.
Agreed. Well said.
Defeated. Converted.
Great.
If Steph may, I just wanted to clarify in that condition 19, so when I write it up, that I have the right language. As, I just want to clarify that it goes this way. The new single-family residence shall be designed and-
Why don't you hold on just a quick second, let me turn to that page. I had it written down.
Why don't we, why don't we wrap that restatement into a motion?
Okay. Do you have this, do you have this language here?
Uh-
Read them all at once.
Yes.
To-
To the-
Extent practical?
Yeah, extent practicable. And same with 21, the practicable.
Yeah.
So, is there a motion?
Mr. Cooper's got all the notes there, maybe he should make the motion.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion. Actually, let me read the motion so I can get it right. All right, someone help me out to find this motion here. This would be in the last page. All right, I'll make a motion that the planning commission approve and amend to use permit UP 978-07 and site development permit PSD 763-07 by adopting the attached resolutions for the proposed construction, proposed construction of a single-family residence south of Fassler Avenue, east of Roberts Road, including conditions of approval in Exhibit A as modified, and incorporate all maps and testimony into the record by reference. The modifications reading, strike requirement two out of the appendix, modify 19 to read, "The new single-family residence shall be designed and constructed to achieve LEED standards and shall seek to obtain a gold standard." Item number 20, prior to occupancy, the applicant shall incorporate to the extent practicable, as determined by the planning director, the green building elements, including but not limited to the following, with the same requirements as the following. Item number 21 should read, prior to occupancy and to the extent practicable, as determined by the planning director, the applicant shall incorporate the green building suggested recommendations, including but not limited to the following, keeping the following recommendations as is.
Commissioner Vedelas? Great. We have a motion and a second all vote. And that motion passes 6-0. Anyone agreed by the action of the planning commission has 10 calendar days to approve the decision in writing to the city council. If any of the above actions are challenged in court, issues which may be raised are limited to those raised at the public hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Next item on the agenda, we have no consideration items, and therefore, we're on to the communications section. Are there any commission communications this evening? Seeing none, I move to staff communications.
Just wanted to remind you that the next meeting in December, there'll, there's no items, so there's no meeting. However, the second meeting in December, which is December 12th, we will be having a study session for the housing element, just to remind you.
Great, thank you. And then oral communications. And Tom, I see that you've submitted a card for this, and you probably need no reminder. However, I'm going to launch into one anyway. This portion of the agenda is available to the public. To address the planning commission on any issue within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission that is not on the agenda. Time allowed for any speaker will be three minutes.
Hello, Commission. I never came and congratulated all of you before, and when I wanted to do that and say, you're doing a great job. Thank you very much for that. And I was going to talk to remind you that the Harmony at One conditions are very, very extensive, and if you could get them from planning before you start seeing the Harmony at One projects, would probably help you. Condition 22 has 59 conditions within it. So, you know, just to give you an idea, and I think there's 79 conditions total. So, it's, it's a very extensive document. It's 10 pages, and you probably really, really want to look at it so you understand what was approved for that project back in 2007. And I want to get my copy back, Mr.-
Yes, here you are. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Well, we want more oral communications like that, that start out with congratulations and a helpful tip.
Thank you, Tom.
I think at this point, we are at the point where we normally get a motion to adjourn. Commissioner Vedelas?
Motion to adjourn.
Commissioner Evans?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second all vote. Great, thank you. Motion to adjourn passes 6-0. This meeting is adjourned.